The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order.
Oh.
First of all, I believe the agenda stands as we have it before us.
Actually, there's one dilation.
But I could be wrong.
This evening, the Baptist home of Brooklyn, otherwise known as the Greens Project, is not being considered. The sole consideration this evening was going to be the potential of a determination of significance under Seeker. That was contingent upon the applicant getting into the planning board and the planning board engineer in response to the engineer's comments. Those have not yet been developed, have just been informed that that will be occurring in the next day or two, response to comments and modification in any plan sheets, et cetera, all of which would have to be referenced in the Enigma Declaration. So what's happening here is that the consideration of a determination of significance will be held concurrently with the scheduled continuation of the public hearing on this project on July 17th. There's no delay involved in that the board wasn't going to act to decide the applications until December, uh, December, July 17th or later anyway.
I used to get that little daylight out of them.
So that 655 item is not on tonight's agenda.
But other than that, we're good to go. Could I hear a motion to accept our plans?
So moved.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Could I hear all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I have no correspondence. Whoop.
One comment. Just to make it easier for Gretchen, who is not joining us until 7 o'clock, when there's a motion or a second, let's identify specifically who made that.
Ah, very good.
Okay.
Eric Plom seconded.
I think Edna firsted.
Edna Laxman.
Yeah, Edna firsted.
And it was all in favor. I have no correspondence or announcements to make. I don't know if anyone else has anything they'd like to share with us? Okay, I think we're ready for our first public hearing. I will. John Lyons, 224 Morton Road, special use permits and site plan, subsequent to grant of required area variance by the ZBA, continuation from January 10, 2017, of public hearing on applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 125-42, 125-67, 125-68E, and G, and 125-73A, in the matter of either a proposed Class II home occupation or detached accessory dwelling unit on an 8.505 acre parcel in Historic Preservation District, Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the town's LWRA being an unlisted action under Seeker. Take it away, Mark.
Good evening. Mark Kaminsky presenting for John Lyons. This is a continuation of the public hearing that for applications for site plan and special permit for a home occupation for John to locate his law practice in a floor above his garage. It's an accessory structure. That information was presented to this board, I'm not sure which, several meetings ago. And because this is a special permit application, under the criteria of the special permit, under the special permit criteria, it required that the lot area be conforming to the current zone. And since this lot was created prior to the new zoning, which is now 20 acres, the lot size is eight and a half, it required application to the town's ZBA for an area variance. That area variance has been granted and approved by the town zoning board appeals. And so now we're back in front of this board to hopefully finalize this application. And just a brief summary of, you know, I mentioned that it's for relocations of John's office. Access is off of Morton Road. This site plan has remained unchanged since originally presented, showing the location of the accessory structure, outlining its footprint. It's all conforming with the town zoning ordinance, and the same thing with location of the sign and the appropriate number of parking spaces for this particular action, application. The small office is just, it's a boutique office that John has mentioned, and I have included in the narrative, and the, it's just for John and Kim Garrison, who works for John, so there will only be two people that will be working at John's.
Any questions, members of the planning board? Any questions, comments from the public?
What public?
Yeah, I know. Where is everybody? It's not that bad out there.
You're the public, so.
Yeah, anything you'd like to say, just for the heck of it? Okay.
I'm gonna say, because I handed you a paper downstairs, and I want it to be included. The application says there are two employees. My understanding is that no longer, one of these individuals will no longer work with John.
That's correct.
So there will be, and my concern was very simple, that we don't have a bunch of people setting up home offices and running little mini businesses out here.
Anything else? Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second by Melody.
And firsted by?
Edna.
Edna. Is firsted a word?
Yes.
It is now.
Oh. I guess I have that authority. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. The hearing is closed. I do have an approval amendment, approval resolution here. What I'll try to do is just hit the high points.
I have a comment before, but Woody did point out to me that one who has arthritic fingers should hit spell check before sending out one's meeting notes. So I apologize for I noticed that there are several additional letters here and there in the, in the, in the resolutions and notes, so I failed to hit spell check in this particular case. Secondly, there is a modification in this draft resolution. While the application is for either home occupation, Class II home occupation, which is the likely circumstance, or a detached accessory dwelling unit, the approval, and in both, the requirements for both uses are met by the application. The actual approval is for either/or with the directive or the authorization to the CEO to issue an approval for either/or, not and/or. So in the last paragraph, the and is stricken. It can't be an either/or situation indefinitely because there's a maximum of one year from the time of approval that one would have to secure a CO.
So then if it was, if were to change to just an accessory structure, it would have to come back to this board?
He would have, he would have to come back unless that, unless that decision were to be made immediately, or within one year, to not execute the Class II home occupation and in fact go with the detached.
And that's, that's always been my understanding, I think, saying that, John.
The reason for having to come back here, and stopping using it as a business, they qualify today as a detached accessory structure.
With the issuance of a special permit.
Right.
You're technically not issuing the special permit. The special permit is really issued with the issuance of the CO for the use.
But if I have a home.
Which has to occur within a year of your, your.
If I have a home office too right now in my house, and I decided I don't like working at home anymore.
You don't have a home office too in your house.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a home office.
You have a home occupation.
So, but if you just stop using it, I mean, you have to come back here?
No, no.
Not for the house, for the, for the accessory dwelling. Because since John wouldn't be acting on the accessory dwelling within a year, it would, that special use permit approval would expire, because he's using it for his office instead.
Okay.
Yeah, you have a class one, which is not subject to special use permit. So since simply the and and the slash, whatever you want to call that, I just deleted in that last paragraph.
Okay. What I'm gonna do is just try to hit the high points here. If anyone has any questions, please refer to the document. All right. These are the approval resolutions. In the matter of the application for special use permit, both of the proposed uses are allowed, they meet the general standards. With the home, Class II home occupation, the appropriate variance was granted by the ZBA. And with respect to the detached accessory dwelling, that also didn't require any specific variances, and that would also be approvable. In the matter of the application for site plan review and approval, as Art has, in consideration of the limited nature of the work undertaken and in its involvement of neither expansion of existing building footprint or installation of either new or modification of existing site improvements, except for potential upsizing of the septic tank, and with the understanding no additional work is intended, waives requirement for submission of any documents, drawings, or other data not heretofore presented, which would otherwise be required, under strict application of the submissions checklist set forth within Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-75, Subsection C. Approves the application under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-73, and authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the site plan and to transmit signed copies thereof to the applicant, the CEO, and the building inspector upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions and/or requirements within the next six calendar months. Submission of the above cited site plan for stamping and signature in either the number specified under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-78, Section B, or as may be modified to lesser extent by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements. Two, payment of any fees or reimbursable amounts due to the town related to review and processing of both this application and the aforementioned application for special use permits. Three, in the related matter, in the matter of the related application for signed permit, A, deems the proposed law office identity sign to be consistent with town design standards and eventual limitations associated with a Class II home occupation; B, recommends the CEO issue, when timely, the requested signed permit. And Art has referred to the latter part and the relationship of the two special use permits. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Could I hear a? Thank you, Eric. A second?
Second.
I think, I think Sharon got in under the wire on that one. I will poll the board. Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay, our next public hearing. Okay. Darrell and Deirdre Solan, Way Road Special Use Permit and Site Plan Approval, Continuation from May 1, 2017, of conduct of combined public hearing on applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, in the matter of proposed construction of a single-family dwelling and installation of related site improvements on an existing lot of record, being a three-acre lot within the rural countryside and water resource overlay districts and adjoining certified agricultural district. All is set forth on documents submitted on behalf of the applicant by the project engineer on March 10, 2017, being classified by the planning board as a Type II action under Seeker. Mark?
Good evening. This is just a continuation of an initial presentation on this project. It's a single-family residence proposed on the north side of Way Road, created by a previous subdivision in the late 70s. This plan has been modified from the original application that was made and I presented at the last planning board meeting. The reason for the change was to, was modification, upgrading, and location of the sewage disposal system, which actually enabled, enabled me to reduce the amount of excavation built on the property, essentially lowered the building on the property. Subject system was originally located over here, that was previously approved, and then it's now been redesigned to a location further to the west. And that is the only change that has been made to the site. Well, what it did was it lowered, I was able to lower the building three feet. And from the site visit that we had, you can see that it was significant in doing that, reduced a great amount of site disturbance. In addition to that, had, at that meeting, at the first presentation to this board, you know, the applicant had disturbed some area within 100 feet of a, actually a stream, so it came under the wetlands law. And so I made the board aware of that, and now that area of disturbance has been shown on the plan, which I had discussed, and subsequently made an application for wetland disturbance permit for this particular area. Those are the only changes from the initial presentation.
One question, Mark. The date on that, is that revised, right?
It's dated March 25th.
March 25th, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I had the correct date.
Okay. Questions from members of the planning board? Anyone in the public might have said something? No? Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Melody?
Second, Eric.
Yeah, I think Eric got that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. And I believe I have a draft approval resolution?
Stands as written, subject to any typos, correction of any typos.
And just so members of the planning board know, we're gonna be taking up the wetland permit in the latter part of tonight's meeting, because of the simplicity of the situation in the site visit, what people said, that there's clearly just, that nothing was really disturbed, it was no big deal. You're gonna see in the approval resolution for the wetland permit, a waiving of the necessity for a public hearing on that particular wetland permit, given the very minimal nature of what it's being applied for.
Yeah, just for verification, it was just removal of brush and some dead trees, and that was it.
Yeah.
And they were just uprooted.
Right. Just so you all know, on the planning board, why we're gonna bring that up in a few minutes. Okay. Ah, okay, for the approval resolution for the special use permit and site plan, we reaffirm our prior classification as a Type II action, so no further environmental quality review is, is required. In the matter of the application for special use permit, we find the proposed work intended used to be consistent with the general standards for all special use permits. We further find the proposed work classified as major excavation to be a necessary and integral part of the proposed construction of a single-family dwelling with the undertaking of related site improvements, including but not limited to site grading, well, SDS, and driveway. We further find that while the proposed work does not substantially encroach upon any regulated area associated with water features occurring within the WRO district, there has been undertaken, as disclosed by the project engineer, some disturbance of approximately .2 acre of adjacent regulated area for wetland stream while clearing brush and scrub vegetation. And we approve the requested special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-20, and 125-68NN, subject to the grant of site plan approval and a wetlands permit by the planning board. In the matter of the application for site plan review, in consideration of the proposed work involving a single site and development of an individual single-family dwelling, waive the submission of any additional information that might be construed to be required under strict application of the site plan submission requirements. We approve the application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-78. Authorize the chair to so note on the above cited site plan and provide copies thereof to the applicant, the CEO, and the building inspector upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions and/or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Grant for the above cited wetlands permit. Submission of the site plan as cited above for stamping and signature in the form and number specified, and payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application, and the related application for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, the town's fee schedule, and executed escrow agreement. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
We have a Woody and an Edna. Okay, I will poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we keep going this way. The Baptist home will not be on tonight. They were supposed to provide us with engineering comments, referring back to rays, so they will be on July 17th for the continuation of the public hearing, discussion of the Seeker, determination of significance, and anything else that might come up at that time. Because I figure that's probably why you're here, because the other ones didn't seem to be of great interest to either one of you. So. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Go ahead to the ZBA, if you want. The ZBA referral.
Oh, it wasn't?
Yep.
Oh. Well, not tonight.
No.
No, not tonight, yeah, exactly. Okay, our regular business, number of applications coming before us. Deborah Axelrod and Noel Raskin, 36 Windcliff Court, special use permit and site plan approval. Planning board consideration of May 26, 2017, request for time extension for satisfaction of conditions precedent to stamping set forth within planning board's approvals resolution of January 10, 2017, in the matter of proposed single-family dwelling and related site improvements.
There's a one-sentence draft approval resolution on page eight of the notes. There's no reason why this approval for extension should be withheld. They're buttoning up a health department approval and buttoning up the erosion control plan with the, his CEO.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last word.
They're buttoning up the requirement for the erosion control plan with the zone enforcement officer.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Resolution, upon timely request, the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby grants for a six-month period, extension for satisfaction by Deborah Axelrod and Noel Raskin of conditions precedent to stamping of site plans set forth within planning board's approvals resolution of January 10, 2017, in the matter of proposed single-family dwelling and related site improvements at 36 Windcliff Court. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Melody, Sharon? Very good. I'll poll the board. Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Okay.
Melody's already suggested that you move to the ZBA referral, McClinchey, in deference to the time.
Okay.
You're familiar with that one.
That one is on?
Page three, or?
At the end of the notes.
Very end, on three of the agenda.
16.
And 16 of the meeting notes.
Yeah. I'll read this to you. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon referral by the ZBA and in consideration of review by the Town Planning Consultant of the application by Christina and Robert McClinchey for area variances providing relief from minimum front and side yard setback requirements to permit construction of addition to a single-family dwelling on a .55 acre parcel in the RM1 district, offers the following comment and recommendation. The planning board finds the requested area variances to raise no significant planning or environmental issues. Beyond its consideration of the above, the planning board recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts and deciding the application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth, the Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125-124C and D, including consideration of the input of the neighboring property owners. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I think it was Edna and Sharon on that one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll just ask for all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you.
Now, I think in that Baptist home, it's not on the agenda, you've got a little bit of time to kill. You can take the new business items early as they, but obviously none of the applicants are here yet.
Yeah.
But there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with taking them before their appointed hour either.
Why don't we go to Darrell and Deirdre Solan?
Oh, we can do the solar, that's right.
Oh, we can do the wetland permit?
Yeah, we can do that.
That's okay. It's been a long day. Okay. This will be the presentation, and.
You've got, you've got 20 minutes, Mark.
Notice, notice I waited till you got up to tell you that.
Totally capable of filling 20 minutes, right?
Well, that's what I'm gonna do, is go through that.
Yeah, I think he's here, he can represent.
Okay, what we have here is, okay. Initial presentation of application for wetlands permit under Town Code Chapter 120 Wetlands for buffer area disturbance associated with the proposed construction of a single-family dwelling and installation of related site improvements on an existing lot of record, three-acre lot. And, planning board review of application and processing is maybe timely under Town Code Chapter 120. Mark?
Okay.
You gotta fill in with some words, though, you can't just stretch that one.
Space between the words. So many times we're so uncomfortable with silence. We should go with that.
I have kids, I like it.
I think that's the pithiest presentation we've had in years before this planning board. I'm impressed.
Okay, as, as I had mentioned before, at the last planning board meeting, made application for a wetlands disturbance permit for Darrell and Deirdre Solan on their property, located on the north side of Way Road. And it was, and the reason for that application is due to some disturbance that took place just for clearing the property. So it involved the removal of some brush and shrubs and dead trees, and consequently there was some disturbance associated with that within 100 feet of a, of a water course that travels on the western portion of the property. Its source is a pond located down the south side of the road, on Way Road, so it's just a water course that goes through there. All the disturbance, there's no sediment transport. I've had them put in some silt fence to create any, or to prevent any transport, and they're just waiting to coordinate with the excavator to clean up that and to seed and mulch that area. I've looked at it several times since I reported to the board, and there has, it's actually, weeds have taken over now, so that.
Looked at it today?
Uh, no, I didn't. I didn't.
With the down, with that one we had?
I didn't look at it. No, but after several of those other downpours, everything's in pretty good shape. We don't have any sediment transport on it, but ultimately, it will be, it will be handled and that area will be regurgitated.
Very good. Any questions for Mark? Any questions from the public, even though it's not a public hearing, the CAB, anything like that? Think we're good?
Yeah, you did for the, for the original, yeah, and we're all set with that, so.
Bill was here for that, Bill was on the site.
Yeah.
In a suit.
In a suit.
Mark, just out of curiosity, is that a year-round stream, or is that a seasonal stream?
You know, I don't know. I think, I really don't know, I mean, its sources, it's the outflow from the pond.
Okay, so it could be seasonal.
It could be seasonal.
Driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, here we go with the approval resolution. Accept the application for wetlands permit, including required fee and site plan as adequate. Two, in consideration of the above cited proceeding, determines there to be no public interest to be served through the conduct of another public hearing, and deems that such will not be conducted on this application for wetlands permit. Three, determines with the concurrence of the town conservation advisory board, the works subject to the application of wetlands permit to have had negligible, if any, impact on the protected stream wetland. Four, grants within condition.
Without condition.
Without condition. Yeah, I hit the wrong buttons, too. Without condition, the requested wetland permit and authorizes the chair to so advise the CEO and/or building inspector upon stamping of the site plan upon satisfaction of the other conditions and/or requirements set forth within the planning board's earlier resolution. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Edna.
Sharon. Sharon, motion.
They've been doing an excellent job. They're gonna get great minutes from Mark. Any discussion? Good to go? I'll poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is Mark, Alex M.I.?
That was only three minutes.
I am Alex M.I.
Why don't we go right to that, then, since you're here?
Okay.
And Mench, Alex M.I., and Mench isn't here.
Yeah, let's see.
Is he Alex M.I. and?
Wilkenfeld.
Wilkenfeld, so you know, he can do both of those.
Representing Marie, right?
Yep.
And then that's after Alex M.I.
Did the first one.
Okay.
Alex M.I. Hold it, no. What are you representing about?
Oh, we're. Going to a goose.
Marie's representing.
So just LXMI.
You're representing Marie?
Yes.
Okay. For Vernbaum and Wilkenfeld?
Yes.
Okay. What do we, so you can go to Vernbaum?
Oh, should go to Vernbaum now?
Should go to Vernbaum.
Okay.
Pretty much the Mark Kaminsky show.
You're, you're putting up... Oh, there's Jonathan.
There's Jonathan. Time out.
You're up, you're up, we're early.
Actually, actually, he's, he's here, so he gets to go next, and then you're gonna go after him, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Unless you're expecting others, Jonathan.
Jonathan's going next, because he just came up, and he was scheduled for seven-fifteen, and we have you down for seven-twenty-five.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I had. But Anthony's coming, right?
Yeah, Anthony's coming.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Stop taping.
The major item on the agenda, Baptist home, dropped off this evening, therefore...
I'm, I'm just gonna blame this all on the weather and just let it go at that, frankly.
So what are we doing now?
We're, we're doing Glen Burnbaum.
Thank you.
We're doing the seven-twenty-five.
Okay.
And let me just read this, I'll introduce who you are, what's going on.
In its record, we're twenty-five minutes.
Continuation from July eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen, of presentation by Glen Burnbaum for subdivision flat approval under Town Code Chapter one-on-one subdivision of land in the matter of proposed lot line alteration between two parcels located at one-ten Stone Church Road and eight Crosby Lane within the rural countryside district, and as depicted or otherwise described in the application and supporting information, including a short EAF Part One and a survey map entitled Amendment to Field, to file map number five-four-oh-nine Lot Line Alteration, prepared by Marie T. Welch and dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, and being a subject of a letter of authorization issued by Winnicky Land Trust on May sixth, two thousand and seventeen. Alrighty.
Okay.
Take it away.
Yeah.
Okay, do you, Richard, have you seen this?
I have not.
Okay, could you?
Wasn't distributed to our board, was it?
I, I think it was. I believe it was.
This is a continuation.
All right, so it would be...
I, I didn't have a folder on.
I don't know. It was a continuation. It's just a continuation.
Is this the house that has a considerable amount of equipment and stuff?
Considering it because we were waiting for the Winnicky decision.
Crosby.
But I was hearing.
But you wouldn't have...
They mentioned something, is that right by the airphone?
Stone Church and Crosby.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. The, this matter was deferred back in July of last year...
Okay.
Because the Crosby lands is subject to conservation easement held by Winnicky, so until Winnicky had reviewed the proposal and authorized the subdivision to occur, they really, they couldn't proceed here at this level.
Which is really consolidation.
Yes, and they, well, the transfer of ownership and consolidation.
Okay.
So Winnicky, subject to meeting of certain requirements that they've set forth, has authorized this matter, this matter to be undertaken.
I didn't see it on there.
Right.
Yes.
Come here. Effectively, Robert.
Gretchen, we have a copy of the Winnicky letter, don't we, in the file? Yes, okay, we do have that. Okay. I don't think we all got that, Richard. I, I don't have a copy either, so, I think it's...
Even this would have come to us last year.
Yeah, I believe it would have, yeah, and then everything got held up by...
That's like the stacks and stuff.
Yeah, the plan, the plan did, but the, again, what was awaited was the letter, and Winnicky wound up hiring counsel to review the matter and all that sort of thing, and then ultimately issued a letter.
Okay.
Here's a, Michael, you can, here's a copy of the Winnicky letter, and basically, it's a letter of May sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
May we see the site plan over on the sand?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. While you all are reviewing, I will read the procedural resolution that we have before us. Okay. Make sure I got the right one. Okay, yes. We are accepting the application and supporting documents is adequate for initiating review by the planning board, its advisors, and the public. Two, we're classifying the proposed action as an unlisted action under SEAKER for which the option of coordinated environmental quality review will not be applied. Three, we're classifying, classifies the proposed subdivision as a minor subdivision lot line alteration under Town Code Chapter one-on-one subdivision of land. We're scheduling a public hearing on the application for Monday, July seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, at six fifty-five PM, and directs the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter one-on-one subdivision of land, Section one-on-one dash four-point-four D. We delegate, who would like to go out and look at this lovely piece of property?
I'll go.
Richard?
Sure, I'll go.
Richard and Eric? Years ago, there was a beautiful stand of white Iris Versa color there that, in one of the fields, if you can find that.
I believe Eric on the other.
Okay. In accordance with Town Code Chapter nine, Conservation Advisory Board refers the application to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors within the thirty-day time period provided within Chapter nine, with early response by July seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen encouraged, authorizes the town planning consultant without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of either the above cited referrals and/or site visit to prepare a working draft of an EAF Part Two, a related SEAKER resolution, and an approval resolution incorporating any recommended conditions for the planning board's consideration on July seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Melody?
Agreed.
Alrighty, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Good to go. Our next item up? Mench Grasmere LLC, Mill Road and US Route Nine, special use permit, wetlands permit, and site plan approval. Initial presentation of applications for subdivision flat approval, lot consolidation, and amendment of approved site plan and related requests in the matter of the Grasmere Farm Hotel Development Planning. Board review of applications and processing is deemed timely under Town Code Chapter one-on-one and one-two-five and SEAKER. Take it away.
My name's Anthony Morando. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cuddy and Vator, and I'm here, I've been retained to assist with the Grasmere project, really more moving it forward towards getting our site plan signed and starting to commence work. You all know this project probably better than I do at this point over the last couple of years, so I'll try to keep this brief, just as from an introduction standpoint. Obviously, Jonathan's here, and he's gonna walk through a couple minor changes to the plans and where the origination of those changes is coming from. But really quickly, the purpose of our submission to this board is in furtherance of complying with the existing conditions of the approval that are set forth for both the site plan and the special use permit and the related permits for this project. As you, as you're aware, the Grasmere team submitted through GPI, the engineering firm working on the project, a progress report in May pursuant to the resolution. That report really summarized all the progress that's been made in terms of satisfying conditions. As you can see, there's a number of conditions and a ton of work that goes into addressing those conditions and starting with the Phase One and getting the site plan signed. So we resubmitted that progress report with this, with this request to you, just so that you have it in your file and it's easily referenced. Big picture, in our letter, we've requested essentially three applications. There is a request for a minor lot consolidation, which we'll walk through quickly in a moment. We've also asked for a minor site plan amendment as a result of working with the town highway superintendent to get sign off from his office as part of the conditions. And we've also asked for extensions of the approvals, given that this process that we're now with you here will probably take a couple meetings, which will eventually bring us to August, which is when the approvals are set to expire again. So we've rolled that in to avoid a subsequent submission to you as well, but we can certainly discuss that. The, the lot consolidation is fairly, fairly simple in the sense that there's the, the two smaller parcels to the northern, northern half of the site. One of them's approximately twenty-five acres, the other's approximately twenty-nine acres. What we're proposing to do is solely for the purpose of addressing a Department of Health, a county Department of Health comment in their most recent response to our submission to get the county sign off. As you know, Department of Health, the county Department of Health's sign off is required as a condition of the approval, so this is one of the final items that we're working on. One of the comments in the Department of Health's response to us was that the, for Phase One, the, the lines for water and septic that cert, can't be on separate parcels from buildings that those lines and, and systems are gonna serve. So essentially, what we're doing for Phase One A is consolidating these two parcels by eliminating existing boundary between them. There's no change to the Grasmere project, that's been approved. It's essentially converting those two tax parcels into a single fifty-four acre tax parcel. So that's the essence of it. We also followed up with the Mr. Pearson from the County Department of Health to be certain that since the purpose of doing this is to address their comment and get, and move forward with getting the, the site plan signed, that this will in fact do so. And he did respond on Friday via email to us confirming that this, understanding that we'll have to go back to them for, for subsequent phases, to get the first site plan signed, this will satisfy the county and we'll get sign off. So that's the essence of the lot consolidation request that we've made. The second request, dealing with the site plan amendment, I'm gonna let Jonathan walk through it better, given he knows the site much better than I do, and can probably explain it to you.
Yeah, and also, just so you guys, to acclimate everybody on this map right here, Grasmere, the building itself is right here, and then the Stone Barns are right here, and then this is, this area is about a twenty-nine and a half acre parcel. The new drive coming in off of Route Nine runs right down this line right here. And the issue was that the ponds on the property are basically right around here, and one of the pond cottages and one of the maintenance buildings on this parcel, the septic field for those buildings is on this parcel. DOH said you can't have two separate parcels, even if it's the same owner, and that's the reason for the consolidation. This second one is also small. Well, actually, use this. And this also just...
I can actually hold up this way so you can see it.
Yeah, right there. The second piece right here is, is really just this Mill Road entrance, and when we did the geometry for that with respect to potential emergency vehicle access, just used the car entrance only, but in the case of an emergency, emergency vehicle needs to go down here. The turning radius would better push it down about forty-five feet from where we had it located originally, it created a longer turn this way, and also put it directly between the neighborhood properties, houses, which seem nicer for the people of all. So really, that's the only challenge.
Jonathan, relative to that, I live on Mill Road, Jonathan knows that, I don't understand if that's ingress only, why you would change that, because it's a perfect shot off Mill Road, the way it exists now, between the pillars. Now you're getting down to make a left-hand, right-hand forty-five or ninety-degree turn. I don't understand why. Was that your request or was that the town's?
No, that was, no, that was something that came up, there was some issues that actually Bob Donaldson raised, about, about if you're coming from the direction of Roncliffe, towards Route Nine...
Okay.
The turning radius to the right is difficult.
Okay.
And that's why we, originally, we weren't gonna move it as far, it's just then we got into the, when we got it actually taken up, a closer look at it, if we're gonna move it, it made more sense to move it down a little bit further this way, you know, make it a ninety-degree.
I imagine the first repulsive street's very happy about that.
Yeah, well, yeah, they were.
Wasn't it coming out right in front of their house?
Yeah, it was coming out right in front of their house, so yeah, this is, this is a nice situation. So it's a...
Frankly, I'd forgotten about access from my side.
Yeah, yeah.
And it just logically says everybody's coming over Route Nine.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think part of the problem, too, with the original, the current entrance as it is, when people come in off of Route Nine, because when you come in and Mill Road actually turns, the people would come in and go right into Grasmere and cut people off that are coming out.
That are coming in.
Well, I speak of experience.
Yeah, and when we, when we discussed with the highway superintendent, you'd be like this, this...
Everything now is supposedly right-hand turns, not, not angular turns because of sightlines and...
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what we got into.
Other questions?
Yes, are you going to put some pillars at the new entrance, like, or at the current entrance? Because we did discuss that at that...
Yeah, no, I mean, I think thinking right now would be to, to, I mean, I personally, you know, I like the idea of keeping the pillars where they are.
Well, yeah, keep them where they are, but make additional ones for the new ones so that there's a little continuity.
We can, we can take a look at that, I don't know what the, we'll have, you know, we'll get into sort of more the aesthetics of it, but I, I really, I like that, that shot that exists right now, I mean, that's the same thing that we're talking about. It's nice because it provides that, it feels like it's a straight run up to Route Nine. And then right here, yeah, I mean, we'll be looking at, at something that's pretty key. But yeah, definitely in, in the context of, of what we're gonna be doing, it's gonna be very much in the context of what exists in state.
The sub of the stone wall is...
I actually have a slightly different opinion than Sharon in that I would prefer that it not pretend to be something it's not, there weren't original pillars there, and I wouldn't like copy them to make it look like they maybe were.
I agree with that. And the other pillars at the other end of the cemetery right there are an example, I mean, when you go by them, it does give you a, a sense of at one-time greatness, and all along Route Nine, you have those hidden little pillars, they're kind of cool.
Yeah, they're cool. And I mean, there's actually two pillars off on this route, on this, on this one, too. Yeah, we're gonna look and see if we can just use those in life.
Then you can go around Roncliffe and pick up the rest of the concrete walls that are on, certain laws around down.
Yeah.
Are there other questions for Jonathan? Okay, I have a couple of resolutions here, I'll...
Actually, yeah, actually, one resolution, simply, it's a simple procedural resolution. It does three things. One, accepts the application for subdivision flat approval, lot consolidation. The second part accepts the application for minor amendment of the site plan. Both of those portions of the resolution deal with the scheduling of a public hearing, which will help be held concurrently on those two, two matters on July seventeenth, and refers the matters to the CAB, the WAC, and in case of a site plan amendment, the county planning. The further part of the resolution, which is Part Three, simply authorizes me to prepare a draft resolution, draft approvals resolution for consideration by the planning board at July seventeenth, or subsequently, for both the applications and the various requests that have been made, generally the, the time extension.
I, I think that pretty well covers it. Could, could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And the public hearing is scheduled for six fifty that night. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, LXMI Property Holdings LLC, eighteen Haggard Hill Road, special use permit and site plan approval. Initial presentation of reapplications for special use permit, accessory dwelling unit, and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning in the matter of proposed construction of a five-bedroom dwelling and establishment of a detached accessory dwelling unit on a fifteen-acre parcel within the rural countryside RC five district with associated site improvements and combined sanitary disposal system and water supply. Planning board review of reapplications and processing as may be timely under Town Code Chapter one-two-five and SEAKER.
Good evening, Mark Kaminsky, representing LXMI Property Holdings. So the parcel is located, this is just a portion of the property, the location is in, it's a parcel on three, a previous subdivision, and so its front is on Haggard Hill Road, and it's flag-walled, and it goes up in, heads to the north and opens up to...
Mark, would you mind speaking up?
Yes, sorry. Is this better?
Thanks.
Just got braces, so it's hard to, it's hard to talk a little louder. How's this better?
Yes.
So, opens up into, to the north. So the total parcel area is fifteen acres, and what you see here is a portion of the, of the flag portion of the lot, and the location of the, of proposed residence and the existing cottage. So as mentioned, this, this application was previously approved in two thousand and fourteen. It went through a couple iterations at that time. Originally, the, the accessory structure was proposed in front of the principal residence, and then it was changed to have the principal residence in front of the, the accessory structure. And so the approval was granted in two thousand and fourteen, and they started with, and it was crafted in such a way that they could start with construction of the accessory structure first, and then the principal residence need to be, needed to be constructed after that within a certain timeframe. That, that accessory structure has been completed, CO was issued, same thing, there was the So, as mentioned, this, this application was previously approved in 2014. It went through a couple of iterations at that time. Originally, the, the accessory structure was proposed in front of the principal residence, and then it was changed to have the principal residence in front of the, the accessory structure. And so, the approval was granted in 2014, and they started with, and it was crafted in such a way that they could start with construction of the accessory structure first, and then the principal residence need to be, needed to be constructed after that within a certain timeframe. That, that accessory structure has been completed. CO was issued. Same thing, there was, the Duchess County Department of Health granted approval for water supply and sewage disposal for both of the structures on, on the property. And then with the construction of the accessory structure, which is just a one-bedroom cottage, it was 900 square feet, that septic system, and it's shown on my plan, it's kind of, it's grayed out, that septic system for that cottage was installed along with the entire absorption field for both, for both the residence and the, and the cottage. I certified those, and the health department has accepted them. So, obviously, that led to issuance of a CO for the cottage. So, then application was made for the principal residence, and when the CEO went through the file, the site plan was, no copy of the signed site plan was found. So, that's the reason that led us to come back to request reapproval of this project from the planning board. In doing that, there was also been some changes made to the principal residence, and those plans have been, those plans were submitted to the building and zoning department and with the, and reviewed by the building and zoning department, which led to application to the, reapplication to this board for the project. So, in doing that, I've had a meeting with Ron with regard to some of the items in this application, and I'll just, I'll start with, I'll start to the south and work to the north. So, located on the, and so it's, it's a, it's a two, it's a two-story structure with a basement and a walkout at this time. And located on the south side is a carport. And so by definition with the town of Rhinebeck, or the interpretation of the CEO for the town of Rhinebeck code for this is that accessory structure, and it's a carport, so it's open on one end, is a garage. So, garage is defined as an accessory structure, and no accessory structures are allowed within the front yard. Once again, the front yard is here, so, because Hagerty Hill Road is right here, so this is located in the front yard. So, that initial review by Ron has required application to the ZBA for an area variance for having a accessory structure in front of the principal residence. In addition to that, there are some architectural changes that were made to this, to this plan that I just, I just had, I just obtained those copies of the, some of the architectural plans today. And then that, this section located, and I'm sorry, and my site plan is a little different than the one that you have. The grading on the, this section right here is different. Right here. There's a walkout right here. So, there's, this grates down, the steps down, there's a level area, and then there's a retaining wall at the end of this. This is an atrium here, there's a retaining wall there. So, it steps out. So, that grade is 10 feet lower than the first floor elevation. And the total height of the atrium is 29 feet. From the, from grade, from the first floor to the top of the atrium is 29 feet. So, still in discussion with the CEO as to the interpretation of whether that, that conforms with the current bulk regulations for height. There's just some interpretation as to whether it's average grade around the entire, around the entire property, or whether it's measured from the lowest point on the, on the property to the, to the highest point. In this case, it's flat, it's an atrium. So, there's a question of whether the height is 29 feet or whether I take the average around that. So, you know, I'm not trying to bore this board with all these details, but it, it affects how I'm going to continue through with this application. So, initially, the application was, was made to this board for, for the reapproval of this, of, you know, the principal residence, but after discussion with the CEO, we're going to make a revision, a request for revision to that application to remove the carport from this particular application and change the regrade across the west end of the, of that, of the back of the house to no longer have a walkout there. Request that we continue, we continue with that application because the applicant would like to start construction. In the meantime, we will make a, if, if this board sees fit to continue through with that application and approve it for, reapprove the site plan, we'll refile an application that'll include the carport and possibly include a walkout through, through there so those can be considered by this board and possibly the ZBA while we can start construction on the main house.
How will that affect?
Would the silence have been better than?
Yeah. How will that affect the, the, I mean, will any changes, will any additional work have to be done because of that?
Sure, some additional excavation where the carport's going to go won't change, it won't change the.
So, that, that excavation is not going to go ahead until you get that approval, but then you will do the excavation?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So, that, it would just be excavation for the, for the main residence and not the carport.
And what was that about, the walkout change?
So, then, so Ed, and so there's, my, my interpretation of the code is that building height is measured by the average area around. Ron's, Ron's is not. He says it's right from the lowest elevation. There's only 21 percent, 21 percent of this, of this back west side of the, you know, the west side of the building is, it slopes off, and then there's a flat area and a retaining wall. The rest of it is typical, typical foundation with like, you know, one foot of exposure or something like that. So, so this application, what, posing now, this application, no walkout.
So, then, if that walkout is then approved, then a bunch of fill would be brought in and?
Actually, it'd be cut out. It would.
Cut out, pushed down.
Pushed down, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
Because you're going to drop, because you'll have a walkout from that low, from that lower.
Oh, from the lower.
From the lower elevation.
Either way, they would have to bury enough of the foundation.
That's right.
Ahead of that.
They would.
So, would this be a minor site plan alteration down the road?
Right?
Also, you had said that this was a two-story house, but this, this sketch shows, looks like three stories. What's, what's that?
Well, that's, that's the, you know, it's, whether or not you consider the basement, you know, when you expose it like that.
Well, there's a, on this, there's a little coupla up there with a window in it.
Yeah, that's the entry, right.
Oh, okay, so that's just a, a window in the, in a vaulted ceiling interior space. Okay. And what are those flat air roof areas? They look like they have parapets around them. That's a strange-looking thing.
I just saw the architectures today, so.
Okay, so you're as confused as I am about that.
Well, no, it's just, you know, I do have some other sections, I do have some other sections that I'll share for.
I have a question, Mark. What is the capacity of the system?
It's four, six bedrooms. The original septic system was approved, six.
Okay. And this house is, is five?
Five.
And then you got the cottage.
Because I couldn't find five bedrooms and four rooms. Two bedrooms are upstairs, right?
Maybe that disappeared too.
I mean, I think they show us four bedrooms upstairs.
They were in the carport.
If it's fewer, who would? It's fewer. Two in the carport.
Mark?
Yeah?
You'll figure that out. You're going to find the answer.
Yes, I will.
But just wanted to finish my question. Is the expansion?
It's located adjacent to it, so it's to the south.
So, just, just down here.
Here, we have a site plan here.
Right here. So, here's the, here's the area here.
This is the approved septic. It's right there.
Oh, I see. So, so it's like just double this and it would be like that?
Yes.
You probably don't know this, but could you tell me what this odd cladding is on this, on these, I guess they're dormers? Are they dormers or what are they?
Yeah, I apologize for not being prepared on the architectural details. And I'll, I'll get in.
You have new ones you said you just received today?
We wander a little too far.
So, what we're looking at is perhaps change.
Too far away on question.
We did.
It's just further, it's just further detail to what you receive.
And I think it's fair to tell Mark that actually, because it's not a, the architecture is not part of the application, that's not something that, because of the situation, the particular application, the partial site, particular site, that's not part of anything that we have any approval over.
But the number of bedrooms?
The bedrooms, yes. The number of bedrooms, absolutely, yes. And are there any other site improvements, things of that sort? Yes.
It's only relevant to the fact that they get approval for a septic system that's active.
Correct, correct.
And the system has been installed for six bedrooms.
And approved.
Yeah.
Yes.
Insult approved, accepted, certified. After, I'm going to follow up on Mark's.
Five bedroom house, one bedroom cottage. And actually, when this was done, the health department has changed standards for design as well for bedrooms. So, they revised it by 20 gallons a day per bedroom. So, it's over the 200, 500 gallons a bedroom.
Which gives you a seventh bedroom if you want.
What's that?
Which gives you basically the equivalent of a seventh bedroom if.
Very close to a seventh bedroom.
But of course, we don't have that in the application, so.
Not the application.
Right. So, is that, is it, just procedurally?
I'll help you.
Thank you.
After discussing this matter with Mark earlier today, which was after Mark's discussion with Ron and Ron's determination regarding the carport and Ron's determination, formal determination regarding grade, and also Ron's request that pulloffs be provided along the driveway because the driveway is inaccessible 500 feet in length, I guess.
Right, go ahead, sorry.
What I, what I simply suggested in, in that I'd already reviewed the entire application and found the application certainly, the application's complete, was that the board, I would recommend to the board, that the board proceed with accepting the applications that were submitted prior to this meeting, subject to the understanding that a revised plan would be submitted within the next five days, seven days, what have you, depicting the deletion of the carport, the modification of the grade adjacent to the rear of the structure, and depicting the driveway pulloffs. And that you would proceed with the rest of the procedural resolution, accepting the application, scheduling the public hearing, basically with the understanding that Mark would be submitting that revised plan, not later than next Monday.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark this evening?
Question.
Sir.
Where in our code, because it says anything about pulloff?
It's a, it's a building, it's a building code requirement, I understand.
It is, it's in New York State Building, New York State Building Code.
Driveway inaccessible.
It's under residential structures. Any, any driveway greater than five, 500 feet, you need to have a pulloff that's 50 feet long, and it provides 20 feet of width. So, if you have a 12-foot driveway, it's an eight-foot pulloff.
So, is it an emergency vehicle thing or?
It is, it, it's, it can certainly accommodate emergency vehicles, but, and I think, I think that's the reason for.
If you just go past it, somebody else.
Right, exactly.
500 feet.
It's probably so grandma doesn't have to back up 400 feet on the highway when she's stuck with somebody coming in the other direction.
And so also, so that, I'll show those on the plans, and I'll show, I'll also show some other detail because there's, you know, when the driveway was initially installed, it, Great Care was taking it, there's some beautiful maple trees on the west side of the driveway, and there's some spacing in between them where I can show the pulloff. So, I'll show those on the revised plans.
You're not forced by, by the code to have them X number of feet from the beginning or the end?
No.
So, you can take advantage of the land?
Absolutely.
Stick it in between two trees as long as you have enough.
Right, but I can't, I can't, I can't exceed 500 feet, so to save the trees, I may have to put two in. Right?
Every 500 foot, you have to at least come to the end of the driveway or a pulloff?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, let's.
So, Michael and, Michael and Gretchen, paragraph, numbered paragraph one will have a preamble to it.
The accept pre, the reapplication?
Subject to the understanding, a revised plan will be submitted by 26 June, deleting the carport, modifying grade adjacent to the rear of the structure, and depicting required driveway pulloffs, comma, access.
Here we go. Given that preamble, we accept the reapplications inclusive of revised site plans and the documentation of approval issued by the Duchess County Health Department on November 5th, 2014 as adequate for review by the planning board, the board's advisors, and the public. Two, classifies the proposed action as an unlisted action under SEAKER for which coordinated environmental quality review is neither required nor let be conducted. Three, schedules a combined public hearing on the reapplication from Monday, July 17th, 2017 at 7:00 PM, and directs clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof. Delegates, planning board members.
I'll take it.
I'm sorry?
I'll take it.
Woody? Who would like to join Woody?
I'll go.
Richard, okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Two, conduct a site visit, field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of the public hearing. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, refers to reapplication to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment. Six, requests further technical review as may be required of the reapplication by the town's planning consultant and without prejudice to information that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of the above cited referral and field visit, authorizes the planning consultant to prepare working drafts of an EAF Part II and Part III as may be necessary, seek a resolution, and draft approval resolution for consideration by the planning board when and if timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one question for, when we come back, is it just as a new, is it as a new application or is it amended? Go through this without the carport and with the, with the, not showing the, or the walkout for the basement?
That will be an amendment of an approved site plan, assuming that you have site plan approval by prior to that.
Understood.
So, that would be an amendment of an approved site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, I have Aaron and Margo Wilkenfeld, 12 Hagerty Hill Road, subdivision plat and wetlands permit, sketch plan conference, and as may be timely, initial presentation of applications for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land and for wetlands permit under Chapter 120 Wetlands in the matter of proposed 2.025 lot line alteration between two parcels within the countryside RC-5 district and the construction of a single-family dwelling with an irregularly wetland pond buffer, planning board review of application and processing under Town Code Chapter 101, 120, and SEAKER.
Just looking to schedule a public hearing.
Well, it's going to be up to the planning board if they feel they have sufficient information tonight to accept the application and then proceed along those lines.
I'm just looking at the line, there's two lots.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Part of this lot.
Actually, what I'm going to do is I'm going to hold this up over here so that.
Everyone can see it, and we can explain it, and hopefully people at home can see it. Do you guys see it? Beautiful. We're looking to transfer this, this piece of property from this lot to combine it with this lot, and this lot will still be over a minimum of five acres, and increase this substantive, what is, be a substantive lot, that it is to be over five acres. And the, the, the both septic and the expansion area, no any difference. We're going to move the house just a little bit, I think, and just so that drive in the end without being in the wetland zone. Any questions? Is it, the lot I'm looking at, parcel A, landlot right now? Is it right way? It's really part of this lot right now. Oh, it is? Okay, it's not already. So, it's not landlot. So, it's going to be combined like this. It says access out here. So, I end up with a six-plus acre, this has a top.
I have a question. Is the, has the blood running completely out of your arm shed?
I finally found a use for myself.
Any other questions?
So, Michael, this is an application.
So Michael, this is an application for a land consolidation.
Yes.
And for a wetland permit.
Correct. So some of the work is gonna happen within the buffer of the wetland. Some of the work for the single-family dwelling.
And that location of the single-family dwelling near the wetland has been necessitated by the restricted area that was created as part of the subdivision. So the initially proposed house site, the initially proposed house site was in fact within, partly within the restricted area. So the house site, it moved back closer to the wetland.
Any other questions?
Well, I do have a procedural resolution here for you.
All right.
The planning board, we accept the applications as adequate for processing review by the planning board, the board's advisors, and the public. We're classifying the proposed action as an unlisted action under SEACER. We're gonna classify the proposed subdivision as a minor subdivision lot line alteration. We will schedule a public hearing on the application from Monday, July 17th, 2017 at 7:05 PM and direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land, Section 101-4.4D. Also, we also... The public hearing for the wetland permit would be concurrent with that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so...
On the schedules...
Concurrent.
Schedules a joint public hearing on the applications set forth in Chapter 120 Wetlands.
So the noticing will have to be for both the subdivision application and the wetland permit for the public hearing?
I'm sorry, Gretchen just got that.
Okay, well I'd...
Good catch, Michael.
And who would like to visit?
I'll go.
I'll go with Eric. And we'll report back at the public hearing. And we will be referring this to the C A B. And we request further technical review as may be required of the applications and without prejudice to information that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of the above cited referral and field visit. Authorizes the planning consultant to prepare working graphs of EAF Part II and III as may be necessary, seek a resolution, and draft approval resolution for consideration by the planning board when and if timely. Could I hear a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. If I could get your contact information so I can set up the site visit. If you could just... What? Will it be Marie I'll get in touch with?
Aye.
Okay, I have her information. Very good. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
The 18 Hagerty Hill Road...
She might actually...
Same date.
Same date. July 17?
July 17.
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure.
Good night. All right. Last but not least, Franklin Forest Inc., 68 Mount Rutzen Road, site plan approval. Sketch plan conference and as may be timely, initial presentation of application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 Zoning in the matter of the proposed construction of a 615 square foot covered pavilion on 195 acre parcel within Land Conservation District in the town's LWRA. Planning board review of applications and processing under Town Code Chapter 125 and SEACER.
Is it 615 or 815 square feet, Michael?
Hold the phone, I'll let me see here.
What's it?
It said 615 and it says 815 here, so I'm just curious.
Oh. You mean... Oh, you mean the ti...
No, the size, square footage of the structure.
Oh, I have 815, 815 square feet.
Okay, you had just said 615, so I was curious.
Square footage and the pavilion? 615 or 815?
I thought you asked me was square or feet? Ah, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
20 by 40 foot line, so...
That's 815.
Yeah, it should be 815.
815. All right. Where's 615?
I don't know, he said 615.
Oh, he said...
I might have said that.
Okay, so that's why I was curious.
Okay, I was gonna say, the notes in the... You tend to both say 815.
Yeah, yeah. It's the only reason I say it.
I thought the smaller size might be better, I don't know.
It sounds like smaller, but it might look larger.
Warren, Donna asked me to ask a question at the beginning of this.
Yes.
Has an escrow deposit been made?
An additional deposit was made.
Very good.
That... Did you get that today?
Yeah. She just asked me to...
Yeah, and once we got notified that...
She said either make sure it's been done or else put it in your resolution as a condition.
Oh, no, absolutely. Yeah, no, as soon as I heard about it, I reached out. So anyway, Nick's only is not here tonight, but I am authorized to act for him and Franklin Forest. Here before you, back in January, I think I met with representatives of the planning board. It was Michael, Melody, Art Road, and Nick was present. And there was a lot of discussion about the dredging work that was done of the pond a few years ago, which... For which they had gotten a DEC permit, but strangely had neglected to get a planning board or a wetland permit here. So we tried to remedy that by providing a full copy of the engineer's report on the wetlands and all the applications that went to DC. You know, the approvals that came back from DEC. Hard copy of that report, many pages, was provided to Jer. And, you know, once I got that whole file basically from Nick, I provided that to the planning board. So the proposal here is that there's a lot of information. It's a little bit extraneous to the pavilion and the package you got, but it's just kind of documenting that period of activity in Franklin Forest. And one of the things that the... That I was asked in January was to provide... Because there isn't much in the files in Town Hall in Franklin Forest. Provide a couple of trail maps, and there turns out there are at least two of them. So you have some documentation of what's in the forest and what's been done to date. There's a pretty thorough map done by Dutchess County Planning Department at some point, and there's more of a little cartoony map for hikers that are there. But they both show the same trail system. It's a good thing. And then there's a lot... There's some historical photos of the pond over the years. So you see it when it was first excavated and then how it filled up with fragmites and became kind of choked and then got dredged and cleaned. And where the fill was disposed of on the property. Yet all of that was done subsequent to DEC permits and so forth. So the point of that, again, is to show you that at least after the fact, we're trying to provide the documentation to the town and satisfy the town. You know, the planning board, the conservation advisory board, anybody else, that that work was done in accordance with some sort of regulations. And this application is actually very modest. It's sort of the tail of the dog. Now that they've cleaned up the pond and they, you know, have a lot of hikers there, they want a covered outdoor recreational pavilion where people could have picnics or gatherings and so forth. And so we have to stay clear of the area where the fill, the fragmites were buried, because we don't want them to pop up and do anything again. So we're beyond that, and we're just beyond the wetland buffer edge of the pond. And Ron made very sure of that. So that was... We actually have a very small area in which we can put this pavilion right along the edge of an existing path, outside the wetland buffer and outside the area of spoils deposit from the pond dredging. And so that's where we're supposed to put it. So there's a partial site plan. Franklin Forest, as you know, is pretty big. Partial site plan down here showing its relationship to Mount Rutzen Road, the parking area and the path that goes up to the pond and continues up the hill. And then there are... There's a floor plan and section and some 3D rendering of this pavilion. There will be no water. It's, you know, it's purely a covered outdoor place for people to gather. And it's pretty much the gist of the application. Let's say all the supporting documentation relates to a lot of the other things on the site. But I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Warren, I know it's from the location. It's in a place where at least many times of the year, it's kind of hard to get to. It's wet all through there. Is there gonna be a new path put in to avoid getting your feet wet to get to this?
Well, there is an existing path that runs along the edge of the pond. There's like a stone wall there.
I know, and that path is, you know, often just soaking wet.
Yeah. My sense is this would not be used if the area is soaking wet. I mean, it's really for the time of year when you'd be up there.
Okay, so no improvement in the access is gonna be made?
There's no... No, there's no improvements proposed to the path going up there.
Just gonna plunk it down and if you can get to it, you can use it.
That's pretty much true of the cabins and the cabin sites or camping sites and so forth throughout the forest.
Aye.
Right.
Other questions for Warren?
Yeah, I have a couple of them.
Sure.
Warren, is there gonna be any electricity to that structure?
I don't think we would have... Well, you know what? I think Nick's answer is no. But practically speaking, and probably because how are they gonna monitor it and who's, you know, paying for the power? But practically speaking, being able to plug something in probably would be useful for a covered pavilion. So I think at this point...
The reason I ask is because that part is vandal...
Prone.
It's an attractive nuisance in the eyes of law.
Right.
Okay, there's been a lot of vandalism up there. And I think it would be in everyone's best interest if that was some sort of a security system, whatever that is. And it probably has to be driven by energy unless it's solar powered and stuff like that.
And it could be, right.
Just to assure, because they tried to destroy the tower more than once.
The current tower.
Over the years, the current tower. And there's no reason to believe that they won't try to do the same.
Yeah, you're exactly right, yeah.
So my recommendation would be there should be some provision for security and potentially electricity. And then the next question is if you have a building, a sh... A structure that's big and you have a gathering, what about sanitation for people?
Well, there's no proposal for, you know, restaurants.
I know there's no proposal.
No, I hear what you're saying, right.
But I mean, if there's 75 people having a picnic and they all have to go to the bathroom, where are they gonna go?
That's a really good question, Woody. I don't think there are any facilities on site right now for campers. I could be wrong, but I've never seen any.
No, but I know.
What's that?
There are no facilities.
There are, no, right, right. Because that's another maintenance issue. So I guess that tells you when the time, the party's over, because there's...
Do they have a whole portable toilets up the trail?
Not to my knowledge. Well, if someone... Should I type a wedding there? I guess, is that be part of the wedding planning? And they would take them up there. But in general, there is no... There are no public facilities and, you know, they don't want that maintenance headache.
Other questions?
So that may limit the kind or duration of gatherings.
Is this a volunteer project plan change?
I don't know. I think they're gonna look for some subsidized labor, donated labor, shall I say, to help build it. But I don't... I think they're gonna have to pay for building materials and I think there... You know, some of them, and I think they're gonna have to pay for some... I would think the foundation, things like that, which I'm imagining would be screw anchors into the soil anyway rather than working on grade.
This is on a concrete slab?
There is a slab.
Okay. And that slab is just haunch slab or is it gonna go dip below frost or...
The slab will be free-floating and the thought is that the posts will be on those large screw anchors in the ground.
Okay, so the posts are then gonna be anchored to the slab?
No, they'd be actually around the slab and that the slab sort of flowed in the middle of it. So if the slab had to move because of frosty...
So the posts are gonna be in the ground?
No, the posts will rest, you know, probably some sort of composite base. And then these anchors get through into the ground first.
Oh, screw anchors into the ground and they sit on top of those anchors.
Right, right. That's the intent.
And if they can't screw in because of rock, they'll do something else or...
Well, we'll have to do... I mean, rock is great because, you know, you can drill and pin into rock and so forth, but I don't know that there's a lot of rock right there. If it's so wet, maybe not, so I don't know. Some of these mysteries will be solved as we move forward, but, I mean, we'll have we'll have alternative strategies, but low budget was stressed to me, simplicity.
And this is just standard timber frame construction?
Yes, yeah.
And metal roof, was there?
I would love to see a metal roof, but my guess is it's gonna be asphalt.
Anything else for Warren?
Looks nice.
Also, just so you all know, Warren did provide all the information on the dredging, the pond, and all that work. It's in a binder downstairs in our file. It's a fairly extensive thing with all the DEC information, all the inspections and everything. So that is down there if anyone would like to go down and read it. Well, if I hear nothing more, I will have a resolution. Okay. The Town Planning Board accepts the application as adequate for processing and review by the planning board, the board's advisors, and the public. We classify the proposed action as a Type 2 action under SEACER which further environmental quality review is precluded. We're gonna schedule a public hearing in the application for July 17th, 2017 at 7:10 PM and direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 125 Zoning, Section 12577. Who would like to go to Franklin Forest?
I'll go.
Edna?
I'll go.
Eric, okay.
You guarantee no ticks, right?
I was just gonna say, make sure...
Stay home.
Make sure you're ready for that. Okay.
No more than your budget.
We'll do the site visit. We will be referring it to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment. We will also be referring it to the Town Waterfront Advisory Committee for review and comment and request further technical review as may be required of the applications and without prejudice to information that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of the above cited referral and site and field visit. Authorizes the planning consultant to prepare a draft resolution approval, draft resolution, approval resolution for consideration by the planning board when and if timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I believe that concludes tonight's... Anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Only don't expect a meeting of this length on July 17th.
Oh, Lord.
We're beginning with eight public hearings.
Oh, Lord.
And besides the eight public hearings, there'll be the return of SEACER responses on Rock Ledge and who knows how many other applications? A solar farm application and others that will come in between now and the next couple of weeks.
Are we supposed to do a site visit on Rock Ledge?
No, we don't have an application yet from them.
Actually, you do have the... You do have the applications, but you're not in the application review process.
We haven't accepted it.
The applications are in fact in the binder.
Uh, yes. Yes.
C A B, could you use your help as far as site visits go? You know that you make arrangements for each other to go to a site visit. And once you know the date you're going, could you contact Gretchen? Just, you know, let Gretchen know and Gretchen would be possible. It's gonna be just Ryan and me. And that way, we can get information out to all of the C A B to see who might be available on that date.
Okay.
Well, we've been trying in the past to coordinate through Ryan when we set the date, so it's not a matter of... Been setting it jointly where we could.
I'm gonna add one name to that with Gretchen. So I've got to work out...
I typically try, once I set a thing, I send something to Ryan and say we're going down on this date. And some, very often I include him in the...
Exactly. I'm trying to eliminate...
That's what I've done as well. Done that as well.
Then you might as well add my email.
Okay.
And it's R. Donaldson, 307@gmail.com.
Okay.
Because Ryan's at work with... You know, maybe two is better than one about getting the information.
Uh-huh. Sure, absolutely. I believe we can do that. Very welcome.
When I... When I carbon, when I send it online, I send it out to Ryan and I carbon her for her information.
Yeah.
Not that she has to process it.
Right. Just so she... That's a good idea.
It's in the file if somebody asks.
It's a very good idea. Woody?
Too early, right?
Hey, make a motion, Richard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.